Here.
Little bell, good. Mr. Bruni?
Here.
Mr. Gere?
Here.
Turn my mic on. Thank you so much. The way we conduct our meeting is I'm going to invite the petitioner up. You're going to state the reason that you're in front of us this evening. Stay at the podium. Please sign in. Please state your name. You could give us thumbnail of why you're asking for this variance this evening. And once you're completed with that, I'll come back to the board. Anyone on the board will then have a question. We'll ask you questions. Then we'll go to the public, and the public will be able to speak on it. Once we shut it down for the public, we won't re-entertain comments from the public, but we'll retain comments from the petitioner. We are short one member. We need, you know, four positive votes, but I still don't see that's going to be a problem this evening. But if we have anything in front of us, we'll move ahead with the item we have in hand. Okay, we have petition 2023-05. I believe it's on Fairchild. Come up, sign in, voting right there, and state the reason that you are in front of us this evening. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dan Bowles.
Turn your microphone out, please. Thank you.
Good. My name's Dan Bowles. I'm coming to you guys today to ask for a variance in my backyard for a pool, pool permit. I'm on a corner lot, so I didn't realize that I have two front yards. And I got a restriction. My backyard, it's completely like the septic. I'm asking for like a variance of maybe like 20 feet on my backside yard. I think maybe you guys have some of the plot plans of my house or something like that. Originally, we requested, when I bought the house, they were requested to move the septic to the front yard. That got denied, so they had to put it back in the backyard. And that's the only place I can, the side yard is the only place I can put the pool. Yeah, it'd be like aesthetically fine. It'd be 150 feet away from the corner. I know that's why we, excuse me, from like the intersection, I know that's kind of why you have the two side yards for traffic and be able to see that kind of stuff. It'd be behind the house and all that stuff. I just needed 20-foot variance to the north side of the house, if that makes sense, to be able to get it in. Otherwise, it'd just be on top of my septic, so.
Okay. I'm going to start off with you, Mr. Bruni. I know that's kind of your area. Let me ask you a few questions on this.
I was actually out today to look at the site. So I see the pool is already in.
Yep.
Where it sits now, it sits dead over the top of the septic field.
Is it?
For sure, yeah. Judging by your plot plan, it's 10 feet off that corner. Where that telephone pole is, you're probably within 15 feet of that pole. So you're sitting directly on top of that septic field.
Yeah, okay.
But I don't have any questions other than that.
Okay.
Just a statement.
Sticky, please.
Yeah, I guess my biggest concern is the proximity to the septic field.
Mm-hmm.
And if that's permissible by the county health department. Because from my understanding, you're not supposed to put things on top of those.
Yeah, yeah. And I honestly didn't realize it was on top of the septic. I paid someone to do it. And I know I kind of went out of order with doing stuff. Like, I got bad information to not pull a permit, stuff like that, but I'm trying to make it right doing it this way, so.
Gotcha. Okay, no further questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Gere, please, sir.
Yeah, just echoing what everyone else said. I know usually there's like a 10-foot rule, or somewhere around there, from any septic systems. That's my only concern. I also did a drive-by, and I saw that it's already up. And obviously, you need to get a permit first and then, but I appreciate you coming in with this request. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, the first question I have is, I also stopped at your house as well. I drove down the side road by your house. The pool is existing. On your plot plan, the drawing that you have provided to us, it talks about the pool being six feet away from the house. It's clearly more than six feet away from the house. Are you planning on moving the pool?
If I can, yeah. I mean, I just brought that up for, because I know it has to be six feet away from the house. So I know that was like the rule. So I just put that in there just because it's part of the rule, so.
Okay. There, you know, it's, my background is electrical.
Gotcha.
I was electrical contracting business for all of my life. And the first thing that I had noticed when I pulled down your street was my heart sank when I saw the overhead power lines to the house going over top of your pool. That has to change.
Yep.
You know, and I'm not sure what the township is going to do, but if it was me, I would absolutely put a red tag on that. Nobody can swim in that pool until you make a change there.
Okay.
Because those lines do come down, somebody could get hurt.
Yep.
You've got power lines as well as communication lines over top of the pool, which is, you just can't do. Also, when I look at, and I'm sure Mr. Chairman will probably get into this just a few moments, when I consider a variance, there's three things that we look at, at least I look at. Unnecessary hardship would result from the strict enforcement of the ordinance. The second thing I look at is the hardship results from the conditions that are particular to the property. And thirdly, the hardship isn't self-created. In my mind, all three of those items are in your favor. You didn't create the hardship. The septic field is there. The house is there. You're a corner lot. And it is particular to your property. So it certainly is something that I consider, but I would want some kind of commitment from you that something's going to change with the pool.
Oh, sure, absolutely. Yep, 100%.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In light of the answers you've already given, I don't have any additional related to that. But I guess to the fellow board members here, does the request as written, if the pool were put, were written and were drawn, and would that at least be, would require a variance, but is it in the safe? Wouldn't interfere with his drain field and would not interfere with overhead?
In my eyes, it's hard to tell exactly. To take the pool, if it's, I'm not sure, is that pool 20-foot round? Is that?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so to take that 20-foot circle and set it into that spot where he's got it drawn, I didn't take it, I didn't get out in his backyard and take a tape measure to it, but it, to me, it seems like it's hard to fit in that particular six foot off the house and still stay 12 feet from the property line and be in that spot. And 10 feet from the septic field, all at the same time.
Right. Because I would concur that, you know, you didn't create the hardship, but we want it to be safe for you and your family. It needs to be safe for you and your family. And because it's already up, it's not something the building department had approved. So we don't know if there's a footprint that will work then, but that would, that's not for us to find out. But you, he would, you would need to find out if there's a footprint that would, would work if you were given the variance. So, thank you.
You know, upon review of this permit application, I would then have him dimension it out to see if it would work. So we're not to that point yet. We'd have to see how far away from the house, how close to the setback. I could check all that at an application in that location.
I knew I was going to do that. Is the comment about the septic field. You know, we really can't grant a variance and put this pool on the septic field. You know, that's not within our authority. And then also the wires, I, how would, you've seen the wires, how would that affect when he moves the pool? It'd still be going over it or not, or, that's what I'm a little washing out.
Well, he has options. He has options. The option that, if it was me personally that I would choose, I would contact a utility company, DTE, and have them put the underground lines, put the lines underground.
Okay.
On the property line, and then go directly to the house. And there again, the NEC requires that those lines are, even though they're underground.
Yeah.
Be a distance from the edge of the pool.
True.
Which he can work that out with utility.
Which, which once again, there are areas that we are, we can't give any type of variance, either on the septic field or on the wiring. So, you know, the setback, we could talk about that, but I think he has some issues that he really needs to graft out. I know, Mr. Seaver, you're here for another issue? Any comments you wish to make at this time, sir?
Just listening to the conversation, I did read the application and the materials that were submitted. It seems to me that there's not sufficient information that the applicant's provided you to be able to grant a variance without these other issues being resolved.
Correct.
And it may be that you want to, you may want to consider tabling a decision pending Mr. DeMaster going out to the property, pending DTE taking a look at it, pending seeing whether or not it interferes with the septic field and Combs County Health Department, and then bring the gentleman back after those issues have been resolved. So you know exactly where it's going to be. Because without knowing where it's going to be, it's a little difficult to grant a dimensional variance. Those would be my thoughts.
Definitely agree with legal counsel for change. I think you're right on base on that. Yeah, we really don't have the information in front of us. There's some legwork you need to do, you know, and I can't say that when you come back, we're going to approve the setback or whatnot. But I believe you're going to have to get in touch with Mr. DeMaster's office and see exactly what needs to be done. We're talking, I think the septic system, I think, is controlled by Combs County Health Department. So that would be someone you would need to get involved. You'd need someone from a DT and the energy and the communication lines to see how you can manipulate around them. As of right now, I don't think we'd be able to move forward with you on this evening. And I think, that I think we would probably need to table this, unless anything additional from my right ear. Okay? Just from my left. And the board's pleasure.
I'll make a motion to table ZBA petition 2023-05 until the issues we discuss have been resolved.
Yeah, the only thing I wish to add with that is, we should have an end date on that. We should not have it opened.
Sure.
Mr. DeMaster, any time date you could come up with that?
I can definitely get out there before the next meeting.
Next meeting?
Or the two meetings. Maybe table it for two meetings. It'll give us enough time.
So.
Give him enough time to contact at us and.
First meeting in December would be plenty of time to.
Plenty.
Okay. Can we adopt that to our motion, then?
I'll add that to, let's see, let me look at my calendar. Anyone know that date of that first? We'll table it till December the 13th.
And Bowles, I just want to make sure you're fully aware that it's your responsibility to contact Mr. DeMaster's office and also, you know, power company or communication company and also anything to do with the septic field before our December meeting then. Hopefully, we could get this resolved.
Yep, sounds good.
So we could do that. So we did have a motion on the floor to table. We did have support. Any additional comments or concerns? All in favor, saying aye? Aye. Petition has been tabled. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, old business. Any old business we want to bring up? You ready? You ready? Okay, thank you, sir.
It's too hard to address it from here, so I will either use the podium. Is that okay?
Please do, yes. Do we want to, do we want to sign these things as we're tabling it? Yeah, put table down there. One more. There we go. Yeah.
Okay, I know, I know most of you. I don't know all of you. I'm Bob Seabert, the Township Attorney. Jonathan had asked me to come out and just talk about some basics with the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you.
I was out maybe, seems like a couple of years ago, but I'm certain it was pre-COVID, so it's got to be at least seven or eight years ago. I know we had a different composition of the board. I've given you an outline that I'm not, I have no intention of following, but it contains a number of issues that you can read on your own and may give rise to some questions that you can always contact me on. But I wanted to just hit some of the basics. The first is, and some issues that may come up, and this is obviously very informal. So, you know, just, if you've got a question while I'm, this is not going to take more than probably 15, 20 minutes. If you have a question, just ask me while we're going through this. The first deals with the membership and conflicts. This happens periodically. I don't know how often it happens here, but I see it in other communities a fair number of times. And as a zoning board of appeals, there's really only two times a conflict is going to arise. One is going to be when a member of the zoning board of appeals is also a member of the planning commission or is a member of the township board. And the Zoning Enabling Act, which provides the statutory authority for this body, says that a township board member that sits on the ZBA, or a planning commission member that sits on the ZBA, that has been involved in the same subject matter that is now before the ZBA, is disqualified. You cannot, it would be like sitting as an appellate judge to review the thing, the actions that you've taken as a trial judge. You can't review your own work. And again, this doesn't apply to any other board members but Kathy and Rick in this particular case. So, let's assume there's a matter that had gone to the township board for which there is an appeal to the zoning board of appeals. Might be a planned unit development, might be special land use if it went to the planning commission, and it comes to the ZBA on some appeal. You've been involved with it either at the PC or at the township board level. You've weighed in on it. You may not have voted on it, but you may have weighed in on it, or you could have voted on it. In either event, when it gets here, you have to disqualify yourself. It likely doesn't happen very often.
To that, to that, would it be, in Kathy's case, would it be like when they negotiate leases and contracts at the township board level, and then it comes here? Like, for instance, I'll go back to a cell phone tower we had come up. That was all discussed and under contract, and technically she voted, would have voted to or for or against the lease.
Yeah, but the for against the lease wasn't the issue that came here. The issue that came here, as I recall, was the special land use issue. And that had nothing to do with the lease. The fact that she voted on the lease is irrelevant to your decision. You were here to decide whether or not the special land use decision of the board was, should be upheld or not. And your decision was called, what is called de novo review, which means you review it fresh. And the fact that you have a board member that sat in approving a lease is separate and apart from the special land use issue.
Okay.
But had she have voted on the special land use and it comes here, you then can't sit here as an appellate body and weigh in on what you did at the other. And same thing with Rick on the planning commission. You can't do that. So that's one conflict. Likely doesn't come up very often. Only applies to two board members, but just be aware of it. The other potential for a conflict is financial. And those aren't always as easy as they might seem. For instance, we had, at the planning commission, we had a board, a planning commission member, I don't know, six or eight months ago, who said, you know, we have this issue coming up, and I own land right next door, and the value of my property may be adversely affected by my vote. That is a financial, potential financial adverse impact on his property. And when those come up, the procedure is, before Marv even raises the item with the applicant, the individual on the zoning board of appeals that thinks that he or she has a conflict, raise it immediately. Hey, I'd like to be recognized by the chair. Bob, you have, you have the floor. What's the problem? The problem is, I have a financial interest in this. I'll give you a perfect example. It just dawned on me. I represent Goodland Township. A couple, two years ago, we had an applicant from Indiana to come in to put in a solar farm. It wasn't a small solar farm. It was 1,200 acres. And the applicant had already pre-leased, with options, but pre-leased about 900 acres already. And one of the individuals that sat on the planning commission was one of the farmers whose property was under option. Now, that's an obvious example, but when that was coming up to the planning commission, it was a special land use, solar, that individual said at the very beginning, wait a minute. I have a financial interest in this. I have an option with the applicant. I obviously have a pecuniary interest in it, and I ask to be disqualified from participating. And of course, the commission, the planning commission had to allow him to do that. Similarly here, if you were to vote on an issue in which one of you had a financial interest, you raise it. You know, not everything is a conflict just because you think it is. Oh, the applicant is, he balls in the same league that I do. That doesn't count. It's got to be a financial.
I have a question. I own appliance installation business. And so, multiple times, there has been items like apartment buildings or senior communities that will eventually put appliances in them. I mean, is that technically?
No, no.
Because I can, because if we, if we were to pass something.
No.
And then I go ahead and bid a job, and I bid that job and get that job, and I also voted on it in an easement for them.
Yeah, that's too remote.
Too, too much of a stretch?
That's an expectancy that you might not have. You may, you may be one of 20 people bidding on that apartment project. No, that's not a pecuniary interest. Now, on the other hand, if you already had a contract, if you were a sole source contractor for that apartment complex, and you do all their work, I mean, I had a buddy of mine who used to do carpet for all these particular apartment complexes. When they went in, he did all their carpet work. If you did all their appliances and they came before you, that is an absolute disqualification. That would be a different situation. So, in the, as members, you have those two conflict situations that come up. They probably don't come up very often. But in the second case, raise it before it starts. Discuss it with the board and have the board weigh in on it. And usually, if there's a request made by the board member to disqualify himself or herself, ask that a motion be made to do that, and it's usually carried, and that cleans it up. Okay? So that takes care of membership. And that, again, that's an issue, again, that doesn't come up that often, but it does. The, the other is, which you already know, is you're a seven-member board. Under the statute, you have to have what I call a super majority, or you have to have a majority of the seven, which is four. And so, it's four for a quorum, but it's also four to carry any, to draw any blood. So if you have a situation where you have a quorum of four, you know that you have to have four votes to do anything. And, you know, in those cases in which you can't get four, there's always been a discussion, well, does that mean that the variance is denied, or can they come back again? The Roberts rules indicate that if there is a vote, and there are not sufficient votes, it's a denial. If you had six of you, and the vote was three to three, and somebody was out of town, I would argue that you could make the decision as a commission to bring it back when you had a full board for the seventh person to vote on it. That would be your decision. But the rule, the rule is very clear. You have to have four in anything you do, both for a quorum, and you have to have four for your vote. The powers of the ZBA are fairly limited. You likely, in 95% of the cases, deal with dimensional variances, just like the gentleman that was up here before. That is probably about everything that you do. The other authority that you have is to interpret the zoning ordinance. So for instance, if there was an issue coming before the planning commission, and there was, you know, I read cases all the time, or I read statutes all the time, and I'll look at it and I'll say, that's not very clear to me. You know, that could go either way, and I'll give it to my partner, and she'll say, I read it this way, and I read it this way. Well, that's not much help. And you never know the answer until you find a case on it, or some judge tells you. But if you have a situation where they go to the planning commission, there's interpretation of zoning ordinance, and it's not very clear as to what that means, you have the authority to make a decision. The applicant could go to the ZBA for an interpretation. And you can literally play judge. And you can look at that language, and you would, you would discuss it amongst yourselves, and you would make a decision as to how you interpret it. And that zoning ordinance interpretation would be binding on the planning commission, or it would be binding on the township board. You also have some appellate jurisdiction over administrative officials like Gary. Anybody in the township that enforces the zoning ordinance makes decisions virtually every day. And as a landowner, if I have somebody like Gary that comes in and makes a decision under the zoning ordinance that I'm not happy with, and I think he's dead wrong, I have the ability to appeal his decision to you. And you have the authority to hold a hearing and to make a determination as to whether or not his decision in fact was supported by the ordinance or not. And if you do so, you would vote to affirm his decision, but if you, you may conclude that, you know, nothing personal, Gary, but we don't agree with you. And you could make a motion and reverse him. And that happens periodically. Yep?
That would still have to be, though, if the person, the property owner, prospective, who are, they would still have to make the
Yes.
Decision to appeal it. We wouldn't just say, we agree with you.
You wouldn't do it, no. If I'm, if I'm the landowner and I get an adverse decision, I've had these in other communities where, you know, there's, it's, there's a lot at stake, and the official makes a determination, and they say, I don't agree with that at all. You, you have the ability of appellate review over an administrator's decision over the interpretation of the ordinance. And then finally, you've got review, and you saw this on the cell tower case, over denials of either PUDs or special land uses. You have the ability to review those as an appellate court. And when they come before you, you don't have to give any deference to what the board did. That decision is exclusively yours. You hear new evidence, and you make the decision. And you went through that a few years ago, so you know what that's all about. So those are really the four categories of your authority. If, you know, if somebody brings something to you, and they don't pigeonhole into those four areas, you don't have the authority. And if there's some question, you know, call Chris Anderson or I, and, you know, we'll talk it through with you. Variance is, again, tonight, you had a dimensional variance. The ordinance has in it several standards. There's four or five standards set forth in your zoning ordinance as to what you have to apply for. And these terms are used interchangeably. The statute says the test is practical difficulties. Your ordinance talks about practical difficulties and undue hardship. There is a case now that is before the Michigan Supreme Court on this practical difficulties issue. And there was a court of appeals decision that went on and on and on and on and on about what practical difficulties meant. Statute doesn't define it, you know, the legislators set the term, but then they don't tell you what it means. And there's a case before the Supreme Court now that may ultimately determine what those tests are. But for now, until some court tells us differently, you apply the standards that are set forth in your ordinance. And, and as Rick said tonight, when you're looking at an application like the gentleman submitted, after you hear the testimony, the testimony, the, the presentation, you then deflect to your ordinance. And you go through it and you say, okay, did he or she demonstrate to us A, B, C? You go through each one of them in detail. Which brings us to the record. The, the single most important function of the, of the board, other than making the ultimate decision, is to make sure you have a perfect record. And, and, and you're, I know you're, you're not lawyers and some of this is, is gonna sound like it's overly technical, but when you make a final decision, it is final. It doesn't go anywhere, it stays here, or it goes to a judge in Macomb County Circuit Court. There is no other ability to appeal. There is no appellate review of your decision to the township board, you can't go to the planning commission. There's nowhere in this community that you can go. So when you're done, you're done. When it goes to the circuit court, most of you may think of trials when it goes to court as, you know, it's a year and a half process, you call witnesses, you have testimony, you have depositions, all this other stuff. And that is your typical lawsuit. But in ZBA appeals to the court, they are based, quote, "on the record." Which means, if there is an appeal taken from a decision that you make, let's take this gentleman's pool case. Let us assume he comes back and you are not satisfied and you make a motion, you deny the application, and he is unsatisfied. He will then file an application or a complaint with the circuit court challenging your decision. There is no testimony before the circuit court judge, there are no live witnesses before the circuit court judge. The record is submitted to the court by the township clerk through us, where you take the documents that you have reviewed, which includes the application submitted by the applicant, any documents he or she wants to submit, anything that you have reviewed as part of the record, the zoning ordinance potentially, if you, if that's part of it. And that is all put together and it's submitted to the court, and they call it the record on appeal. And that is what the judge reviews. And both parties then submit briefs and they argue from the record. And if the record is good, the likelihood of the applicant winning is five percent. If the record is terrible, the chances of the township prevailing is poor. And I'm gonna give you a good example. Some, a, a good portion of what, what I do is insurance defense work for municipalities throughout the state. Somebody gets sued, insurance carrier calls me, they say, Bob, go defend them. I have one now in a unnamed township in an unnamed county where there was a ZBA appeal. A gentleman came in, he wants, he's got a beautiful home on a big body of water. And he wanted to extend the upstairs second floor out further, which required a variance from the zoning board of appeals. And as you can imagine, when you're on the water, neighbors get real touchy about anything, pushing out their view of the water and things of that nature. And the applicant came in, made his presentation, the zoning board of appeals turned him down. And he took an appeal to circuit court. And we're talking about a couple hundred thousand dollar expansion, we're not talking about just putting out a, you know, a couple two-by-fours. And so there's enough money involved and they took an appeal. And I get the case, said to the client, send me the file. I get the file, open it up, I read the minutes. Minutes talk about applicant so-and-so, applicant's there to get an extension on their second floor, meeting held on such and such a date, minutes say applicant made presentation, board discussed it, motion by Jones to deny, didn't meet practical difficulty, second, all in favor, aye. Done. So I called the township and I said, what the hell happened? There's nothing in this record. These minutes don't tell me anything. I can't figure out what happened. He said, oh, Bob, you know, this house was non-conforming. This house was already too far in the front anyway. The house was already in violation. I said, there's nothing in the minutes that say that, nothing. That would have been gold if, if that would have been in the record. You can't expand a non-conforming use in the first place. That would have been a home run, you wouldn't even had to worry about the variance. And it doesn't say why you turned down the variance, it says didn't meet practical difficulties. Which part? Didn't meet any of them? Some of them? None of them? There's nothing there. So, we're now on appeal, and I talked to the other attorney, we submit the record, and he said, Bob, because his client went on his own. He said, what the hell did they do? I said, I don't know, John. I don't know what they did. So there is some possibility that the judge, when the judge sees this pitiful record, may order it to go back to the zoning board of appeals, and he's gonna spank him and tell him to do it right. Which brings me to the meeting in the minutes. When you have, and again, a lot of these are, are small and they're minor, but when you have a ZBA appeal coming up to you, a, a, a variance coming to you, first thing you do, as Marv did tonight, indicate to the audience what we're here for, what the issue is, give a little bit of context to it. Indicate to the, to the vast audience that we are going to give the applicant an opportunity to make his or her presentation as to why they think the variance ought to be granted. When they are done, we will give the members of the public an opportunity, under our rules of procedure, be it three minutes, whatever your rules are, and then when the residents are done, then we will give the applicant an opportunity to respond, if he or she wishes to do that, and then we'll bring it back up to the board. Let me sidetrack for a second. I hear periodically someone in the audience say, wait a minute, the applicant, you gave him twenty minutes and you're only giving me three. The Open Meetings Act is a statute which permits members of the public to come and watch government work. For, I'm not getting political, I'm telling you what the cases say. It gives you an opportunity to come and watch your government work. There must be some portion during that meeting where you have an opportunity to speak. It is not an opportunity to engage in one-on-one with the applicant. The applicant's here for business, and that applicant may take ten or fifteen or twenty minutes, and that's largely Marv's decision to control that, to how long it goes on. But you have to give them a reasonable opportunity to present their position. So when that's done and you've heard from the audience and you bring it back up, there should then be discussion by the, by the board members, as there was tonight, as to what the issues are. And once you've discussed it, somebody makes the motion. The motion needs to refer to the standards in the ordinance and apply the facts that you heard to the standards in the ordinance. Okay, we listened to Mr. Jones. Was this a self-created problem? You talk about it back and forth. And when the discussion is done, somebody makes a motion. I would like to make a motion to deny the variance for the following reasons. One, the applicant has not shown A. The applicant has not shown B. Maybe they meet C, maybe they don't meet D. Address each of them separately to make sure that the record is clear. And then you get a second. And I, I don't particularly care for, and I've seen this at other meetings, I'm not being critical, I don't like the idea of the chair going to every member and saying, what do you think, what do you think, what do you think? That's, that, that, it's not the way it should be done. The motion set the parameters of what the board is gonna vote on. The second, now gave, put it before you for discussion and a vote. So when the discussion is over, Marv will look around and say, any further discussion? No. Call the roll. Your intent or what your motive is on the individual vote is completely irrelevant. If that motion is solid, and the second, obviously, you don't, that doesn't need to be anything other than I second it. If that motion is solid, you don't need to know why anybody up there, what their intent is. As a matter of fact, the case law in Michigan is, the depositions of individual planning commission members, board members, and ZBA members are not, you cannot take their deposition because motive doesn't matter. What matters is, is the motion that was made, supported by the facts that were presented, as applied to the, to the standards in the ordinance. And if they are, you're home, you got a home run every single time. And the only way you lose these cases on appeal is if you have a sloppy record. And that should never happen, because you can control it. So, make sure that that record is perfect. You only got five standards, take the time, get it right. Now the minutes. You're gonna get a copy of draft minutes when they come back to you. And one thing is crystal clear, you do not use verbatim minutes, ever, ever. I had a community where they had some poor clerical employee literally listen to the meeting and prepare a verbatim transcript. It was like reading a Shakespeare play. There were forty-eight pages, which is complete, yes. You don't do that, ever do that. The minutes, in the Open Meetings Act says minutes are supposed to show what happened. So you can read them a year from now, or six months from now, and figure out what happened. That's all they're supposed to do. So when those minutes come back in draft form at your next meeting, you all read them, and if they don't do that, fix them. Fix them, make, now you can't supplement what already was happening, you can't change the motion, but they need to be accurate. So those minutes matter, because when those go up to the circuit court and the judge reviews it, and they're as sloppy as the ones I'm dealing with now in the case I've got, those minutes are, they're horrific, and there was no excuse for it. It was, quite frankly, it's lazy. And you've gotta be able to go through and get them right. So when they come back to you, make sure, if you're not happy with them, fix them. If you gotta go back and have them redrafted, have them redrafted, but get it right. So the minutes are very, very, very important. The, yep?
Does any of the discussion that occurs before a motion is made?
No, technically, when it comes back up, typically what the board will do is say, do I hear a motion? Somebody will make a motion second, now you framed it, now you talk about it. I've got a ton of communities I've either been to or represent that do just the opposite. It comes back and they have a discussion first. So it's six of one, half a dozen of the other. You're playing with these Roberts rules. The, the twelfth edition that I have on my desk, which is about like that, no one, except maybe the city of Detroit, or some huge communities follow, you don't follow Roberts rules to, to the T, nor does anybody else. They're a guide to the basic ABCs of running a meeting. But you're not gonna get killed in court because you brought it up and discussed it first. Again, many communities say, yeah, I have to have a motion first and second, then we can talk about it. That's fine. But if he came up and discussed it and aired it out, so everybody could hear everybody's ideas first, it makes some sense to do that, because as a motion maker, I might want, wanna hear what Rick's gotta say before I make my motion, or what Kathy's gotta say. It gives me the opportunity, you know, to, I, I sit around oftentimes with other lawyers on cases where there's some new law that came out, and, and we get on the phone together, we talk it through, and I come out of that meeting with a different view of it than I did before I talked to him in the first place. That's the purpose of the discussion, to try to, not convince, but to try to, you know, sit down and brainstorm an issue, so that now that you've talked about it, okay, now I'm ready to make a motion. So I think either, either way is fine. At the end of the day, and I'll wrap it up, we can talk about whatever you'd like, when it goes to circuit, the test that the court uses is, was the decision of the zoning board of appeals based on material, competent, and substantial evidence on the record. We just talked about the record. Material, competent, material, and substantial. What that means is, did they have anything before them to make the decision? And when they made that motion, did they, you know, did they have anything? For instance, tonight, I think, had you have made a decision to grant that variance, I think that would have been inappropriate. You didn't have anywhere near the information that you needed, and if you would have granted it, I would have asked you after you granted it, where's this pool gonna go? And you would have said, not sure. Gary's gonna say where it's gonna go. He doesn't get that, he doesn't get that call to make. So before you make that decision, this gentleman's gonna come back, maybe with a better plot plan, maybe after talking to DTE, maybe Gary's gonna go out with his laser level or ruler or whatever the heck you use, and they're gonna come to a meeting of the minds and they're gonna come back and say, okay, fix the electrical problem so nobody's gonna get electrocuted, got the septic figured out, the health department loves it, we're good with it, Gary's good with it. Now you have a, now you have the facts.
But, but in the end, couldn't, I mean, it's all subjective to our opinion. I mean, in the end, they all may say one thing and, and I disagree, there's a practical difficulty for it. I mean, is that?
No, of course, of course, there's a difference of view. You may say.
I mean, the ordinance is, in my eyes, a lot, most of the town, the ordinance is the ordinance, and I don't really sway far from that.
Nor should you. You're not supposed to. Quite frankly, if you took that ordinance to the T and you had a hundred variances a year in front of you, you probably shouldn't grant more than five. Really. Because, you know, it's rarely unique to the property, it's usually self-created. I mean, you could have easily taken the position, the guy put the pool in before he came to Gary. It's a good argument to be made that that's self-created, right? Again, I'm not prejudging the case, it sounds to me like he can come back and he can convince you when he has some better information. But the information has to be sufficient, you can't just wing it, okay? And so spend the time, get the motion right, get the minutes correct, and if they need to be tweaked, spend the time to get them right. And once you're done, you got a bow on it, and I, and I guarantee you, you're not gonna lose five out of a hundred, you don't have that many appeals anyway, but you're not gonna lose five percent of the cases if you have a good record. The communities that lose them, like the one I might, is because they didn't take the time to get it right, and it would have taken ten minutes to do that, okay? So what problems or considerations or issues do you have that come up that you wanna talk about?
Questions, I mean, we, we didn't get a good, good set of minutes at one time, we had some issues with it, and I notice they have been read adopted to, to reflect more what is taking place during the meeting.
I've seen, again, I'm not gonna look at your minutes, but I've seen some in other areas, in other communities I represent. And I look at them and I, you can do better, you know what I mean? You can do better, and it's not that hard to do it. I mean, you're here, you're listening to the, to the presentation, you're looking at all this evidence, and to just, didn't meet practical difficulty, oh, he's done.
Yeah.
He's lazy, he's just lazy. And you got it, you gotta do better, because you go before a judge, some of these judges don't have a whole lot of tolerance when they see that. And they say, they pull me up there and they say, Bob, what were they doing?
You know, you know, we used to have in the past, we used to have more, at some members, they would actually craft their motion, how they were feeling, you know, write it down before they would, they would move forward with it. And I know, you know, Lavelle was referring to today, the issues and, and that if, when we do a motion, we have to say the reasonings.
Yes.
The ordinance, everything associated, just like, hey, this pool's not gonna look good here, we just can't do that.
I have, I have some communities that I represent that have, that have asked us to help them with, so you've got your dimensional variance, which probably is most of your cases. You have the very few that are a special land use or a PUD denial. What we have done is we have prepared a checklist. So we would say, for instance, you know, everybody's got one in front of them. You know, you decide however you want to, but in that checklist, it'll have the five criteria right in front of you, you can't miss them.
Right.
And it'll say in there, when making the motion to deny, or making the motion to grant, follow this in a direction, go to A, and talk about A, and talk about B. And when you do that, you can't miss.
Yeah, we do have written, written orders of the five things that we should.
Yeah, I understand.
On the petitions, yeah.
I get it.
Yeah.
And, and the other thing is if there's conditions, you know, if you impose conditions, this isn't so much here, but I've seen it at planning commission member meetings, not so much here, but elsewhere, where somebody will say, I make a motion to approve the special land use, and we're gonna impose the conditions that the planner and the engineer recommended. It's, it's a terrible motion. It's a terrible motion. The planners give you all these lengthy written reports, the engineers give you all these reports, and they got ten reasons why this or that. When you're making that motion, and make a motion to approve, in, in Rick's case, the special land use with the following conditions. One, you read them right from the engineer's letter, so they're in the record. And you do the same thing with the planner, you read them into the record. Because five months from now, when Gary's out there trying to figure out what the planning commissioner to the ZBA did, or Jonathan's out there trying to figure out what you did, and you're looking at the planner's letters and you're looking at the, the engineer's letters, there's things in there, well, did they mean to include that, did they mean to include that? Just spend the time and itemize them. So when you look at those minutes, you got tears in your eyes when you're reading them, because it's perfect, you got everything.
So they should actually go into the physical record then, correct?
Yes.
How is that affected by the meetings being recorded?
What's that?
If the meetings are recorded, is it something where they can adjust? Once it's, once it's submitted to the, at the Once it's, once it's submitted to the, at the county level, we'll say?
Once those minutes...
That's it? There's no, there's no going back and listening to a recording and saying?
No. The, the, the decision of the ZBA is reflected in your minutes. There's no statutory requirement that you record your meeting, your minutes. Sometimes in a ZBA appeal, if there's a decent audio, the other side and I will hire a court reporter to transcribe it, to send it up along with it, just to give the judge some context as to what was going on. But your minutes are, are your decision, it's like a judge signing a decision from the bench. That's his or her decision, and when you sign those minutes, you're done. You can't mess with them after that and say, "Well, jeez, we looked at the, looked at the audio, and we, you know, it's not right." Okay? And, and yes, a lot of times, too, I, I see this, I'll have a client call me, and they'll say, "Bob, the ZBA, six years ago, granted a variance, or the planning commission, six years ago, granted a special land use with conditions, we think they're being violated." So assuming we can even find the documents from six years ago, we look at them, and you read them, you can't figure out what the conditions are. So we can't tell whether or not there's a violation or not. Had they have been done correctly, and had they been done, you know, boom, 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 you can say to the builder, "Hey, see this?"
Back and forth.
And you're, and you're done. Okay? It's worth going the extra mile. It makes a big difference.
Anybody?
Any other questions? Good? All right, and, and as I said before, you know, anytime, and again, most of them are dimensional. Okay? Thank you so much for coming up. Okay, moving along. I think we have, since we just discussed this, we have some meeting minutes to approve. Did everybody read the, the meeting minutes? You have? Okay. I know we normally, the secretary's not here, but I will sign in his behalf. I don't see a problem with that, do you, Bob?
No, you just got to make a motion approved, yeah.
Okay. Okay. We have the meeting minutes of the 26th. Looking for a motion on that one, please. Are there any corrections that need to be made on it? Hey, anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve the, our minutes, zoning board of appeals minutes from July 26, 2023.
I have a motion. Do I have any comments or concerns? All in favor, seeing what's saying, aye? Aye. Meeting minutes have been approved. We have meeting minutes from August 23rd. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for August 23rd, 2023.
I have a motion. Do I have support? All in favor, seeing what's saying, aye? Thank you. Any additional comments from the floor? Any comments from the board? Anyone wish to discuss anything? We always ask Gary at this stage, what's the new stuff happening? I know we got Chick-fil-A coming, and subdivisions, and you name it.
We hope it's coming.
Oh, we hope it's coming.
You never know.
You never know.
We don't say it to guarantee you until we can see the building going vertical.
Yeah, okay. Till we, till we hear the, what is it, no B?
There's still a lot coming, there's a lot of subdivisions going on, some are coming online, it's a busy time.
Good.
And I do have another comment. So we are all digital now, just make sure you bring your iPad, and if you need any help with it, you can call Paul at IT.
Okay.
And the only hard copies are going to be the minutes that you read, so.
Okay.